I think he's gonna be here tonight to talk about it. I think that's what he said this morning. When he talked of commissioners.
Did they bring up commissioners meeting?
Yeah.
And they approved it?
Yeah.
Once again, we're back to the just coming in here and throwing stuff at without any time didn't talk about it.
Well, I don't know. In my opinion, we can talk about it and we will not do anything until next meeting.
But now instead of having two parties involved, we would have a third party. If that makes sense.
Swords, swords, both of them have to be taken.
Yeah.
Is that the government one?
Yeah.
So the government ones who fill out a.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do I mean the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And we do it forward with stands, love the nation. And we do this with. As for all.
Is the October twentieth county council meeting, we are in quorum. Um. The first thing on our agenda. Is something that we have never ever been involved in ever. And I'm still not so sure if it's even our responsibility to do it. But. Since it's on here. Um, I need a motion to open up a public hearing. It's on as a vacation of an easement. In Coons Lake. Um. Sheldon Briggs, Mark C. White, Todd Brials. Have petitioned to have. I know absolutely nothing about this other what I'm looking at right now. It looks like there's tract land that's thirty feet. Long. I don't know where it's against. It's on the lake or where it is. So. Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
So.
Okay. Dave, bring it up speed. Did you hear what I said?
Yes.
We've never vacated any property before.
Yes.
We have?
Oh, I I heard you say that.
We never have. I always. I don't remember.
Oh, not during my time, though.
No. All right. So we're open the public hearing. Do we have any comment from public? Yeah. Yeah, Jason, go ahead. Justin, tell us what's going on.
I'll defer to Adam too, because the attorney for the petitioners here. So I kind of learned something this morning, too. I always thought that vacating. So whenever I've done vacations in the past, it's for cities or towns in the fiscal body and the legislative body. The fiscal body and the executive are the same board. So I did not realize. I thought that the county executive was the one responsible as. I thought they were the legislative body for purposes of vacating a roadway. Come to find out, I don't think that is the case. The county council seems to be the body responsible as the legislative body. Were vacating roadways. And Adam can expound on that a little bit more because again, I. Until this morning, I always thought it was the commissioners that were responsible for that.
They've done it all the time before.
But we've never done.
I've been since eighty-four and it's always been the.
When it has come up, I. I I see what you're asking of the council ever did, but when it has come up with the commissioners have always or I don't think they've ever vacated it, the property.
Well, I think maybe they did. They split it half and half. They they have some parcels where they. Where there was a road or something that they wanted to split between the properties.
Over the years, this has come up many times with a lot of different lake products. Where somebody wants to make their yard bigger. Because they overbuilt. That's been very common and you know, they want to give up. You know, those kind of things. That's been more common with that. So.
It's just. So you're you're an attorney?
Yeah.
For them?
Yeah. Well, normally what I do is I present and they open up the public hearing. So.
Well, well, I'll tell you right now, as far as I'm concerned, we're not going to take any action on this.
Okay, so the way the statute is written is as the legislative body. Okay, which you guys are. There's an ordinance that ends up getting passed and adopted that vacates. Essentially, what is a planted. But not improved roadway. Okay, even in your packet, um, that was sent over as you advertised for days. These are not properties that are on the lake. They're off.
I'm the only one that has this.
I have extra copies of the margins, but. Pardon me?
Yeah. Yeah. You just have.
I didn't bring it up on the G I S. Oh, okay, sure. Yeah.
It's there, too.
Justin, you mean that or you get?
No, I got it.
Thank you.
I'll just stay after.
Adam.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'll give you both.
I'll try to chief over there. Here, you have one.
Okay.
Do I have anything that will require protection? I don't know. I haven't seen where it's at.
Well.
Nope. Oh, yes. E, this one, let's have purpose.
Right.
Sometimes it might be able to get my reason. I'd like to know what that is. Just to make a piece of property bigger, see if somebody's more value. Enough.
What do you have? Tax ID number? What do you want? We got it. Who are the people? Bigger than so. People on the road. Uh. What? What is the person? One and two. I don't want to clear that out.
Sure. Yeah, you got the seventy-five number.
Uh, hold on. Yeah, right here. It's on the shame. Seventy-five zero three. What? What is the reason for one of the things? This public. Excuse me.
Stay away. While they're working on pulling up G I S. These are actually nicely color coded by the service. So the current three contiguous property owners that are petitioning. Todd Brows, Mark White, William Sheldon Bridges. They own what's marked as tracks one, two, and three. Have this vacate or have this roadway behind them. That's an unimproved platted roadway. Which at some point southwest of here. Um, was vacated and that property went to the Deborah M. Maddaker Trust. Who's one of the parties noticed for tonight because they own a property contiguous to this. I also have representatives here from Raycroft Family Trust that owns directly behind us, which is the large vacant parcel. And then the other party that was noticed but haven't heard back from that owns. Across a portion of Maple Avenue that's improved in the northeast of these three lots. These are considered. Uh, platted roadway is that if they were ever built. Would ultimately come under county jurisdiction as long as they actually were accepted and it's platted to the county standards where felt. So this is all purely statutory.
I wonder who vacated the the previous. Section.
Okay. So there has been, I mean, I know this doesn't happen frequently and usually in a lot of lakefront communities, especially ones that I've also been in front of. Not vacate right of ways. But when you have one that's already been partially vacated and you can't even have a road connection through. And we meet all the statutory elements that we're not cutting off access to public facility. We're not cutting off any issues related to a future improvement that the county or that owner are going to be doing. And it doesn't impede traffic flow or any access to any existing property, which this does. There's no road. Um. Then we meet the statutory criteria to petition. What happens is they've identified for illegally wants to be vacated. There is not an agreement under statute with neighboring owners. So what happens is effectively this ownership gets split. Between the owners of tracks one, two, and three. And the other half, the other side of these then go to the Raycroft family red trust.
I just wonder who vacated the previous part of the road. Who?
It's probably the commissioners.
Probably the commissioners. Because this council, my knowledge, has never, never been involved in. Any type of vacation of any property. Ever.
Okay. Well.
Because that statute looks like it's almost written for a city or a town. The way it's written.
Well, it includes it includes county. This is not an approved.
But it doesn't say it doesn't say council directly, though, does it? In the statute?
It took and it took me a while to circle around to this, too. It talks about the county legislative body. You've got to dig elsewhere in that article. I believe to find where the legislative body is the county council and not the county commissioners. I did not know that was the case. I'll be honest. I I did not know that you guys were classified as. But when you think about it. And. Adam could probably speak to this, too. When you're talking about branches of government, the legislative body. Should in. Cases like the county of the county, not some of the towns and cities, but the legislative body and the county executive should not be the same body separation of government. So technically speaking, and by statute, you guys are the legislative body and the county executive or commissioners. True, me too. I again, I I scrambled this morning to kind of check through and I think Adam could attest to the fact that it's kind of a poorly written.
Yeah.
Chapter.
Does that mean any of the ordinance that the commissioners passed are no longer?
I don't think so, because you've got you've got.
It's always good.
Yeah. You've got statute of limitations on things like that, um, special review of county decisions, so.
All right. Well, explain to us what it is.
Sorry, we're playing. We're playing catch up because.
Yeah, oh, that's. And this is the first time I just saw this five minutes before the meeting. Just that's the first time I've ever seen that. And they didn't even have a copy of it. She just handed me a copy.
Well, he said he sent it out to all you guys.
So he is. No, it was provided. So the way this process works is it goes through the clerks office. Again, guys, they also have a different process where it goes through.
Yes, you know.
All this has been provided through the assessors office.
But it was never given to us. Until now. And I'm not saying that's your fault.
Respectfully, counsel, I do not. Put stuff directly into your.
Right, right.
Okay, there is a statutory process.
And no, and nobody ever did, probably because it's never been done before. So this is the first time. We've ever seen this.
I can only tell you what discussions I've had and what information I've sent over to county attorney. And it's the legislative body. And. That's why it's here before you. What I would suggest is in a situation like this is because you have that authority. You can still. Make a decision and you can still have this be an agenda item before. The county, uh, commissioners.
Yeah.
Just to advise them of what the decision is going to be.
We can also table it. And send to the county commissioners their recommendation on it as well. Because my per myself personally. I'm not in this situation. I'm not in the position to make a decision on this. Since it's something. We've only known about for fifteen minutes.
Well, I guess maybe too, like if there's some discussion, though, at least. The pros and cons of it are like, let's say if we were, if this was normally commissioners. You know, in this kind of a scenario, like what would the basis for us? On behalf of the. You know, of the voters and the taxpayers. To vacate it and just give it away. I mean, that's essentially what we'll be doing is giving that. Property away. I just. I just, I just want to make sure it be a fair decision. Like, for example, when the railroads were here and the railroad pulled out, people had to buy that property. Um, or. Or it it never did get purchased or somebody else bought it and developed it, made something else out of it, made a trail out of it, whatever else. I mean. Well, we play devil's advocate. That's that's a that's a pretty good sized strip. But I mean. Then like what if and and it's unfortunate, there's it looks like there were some other things that were contiguous that were changed. Before we got this decision, like maybe that would want to be a county side. And I'm just throwing that out there, but like down the road. County sidewalk or a trailer or something like that without really looking at the property really well. You know, I don't know.
It'd be interesting to see, like on you're talking about the rails, the rails behind our farm. It was quite clear that when it was vacated. It would go back to property or. So I and it was just a matter of a quick claim deed for for Ben didn't have to buy.
So I can just.
Because it was right in in the abstract. And so that would be my question with them is there.
The need to go to the west. Yeah, that, but what about the other?
So.
Back to the west.
Back to the west. So this is southwest.
Thanks.
This has been vacated on. That's your little. Jawed triangular piece that comes down. There's been vacated. Including a portion of the road to the west, which is locusts down. Even with the rodent. Okay, so now what you have is you have a strip here of unimproved area. That they're asking to be vacated because you can't actually connect. A roadway from the northeast behind their property to southwest. If you did that, then you have a double front and lot. Their backyards would essentially become front fence. And. The most impacted property owner for this request is here. Raycroft Family Reddickal Trust is here. To speak to whether they support, oppose this, or have questions or concerns. And they've been contacting my office after they received notice of the hearing. And we've been talking with them about this and addressing any of those concerns, but I'm not going to speak for them because they're here.
Right.
It's me.
Daddy?
Um. Does he know one of those with vacating?
That's why I asked the question.
I don't have that on here except that. There is a document twenty twenty-four eleven ninety-nine. So it appears.
That would have been the commissioners that did that then if it's that soon, because we've never done. Anything like that ever.
I don't. We will do. Whatever.
I mean. Where did that land originally come from? Well, it says proposed vacated road. So if by one time maybe it was meant to be an alley or a future road for access to some other property. I I don't know. I mean, it's pretty hard to make a decision on something you know. Absolutely really nothing about.
So is there anything in the covenants and subdivisions as well?
We don't have anything with the. This is just legal descriptions. All this is.
Yeah, I know.
There's nothing about. I don't know if this is subdivided. There was anything.
Right.
Sometimes it might be able to get my reason.
What? What what is the?
Yeah, you got about seventy five number.
Uh, hold on, yeah, right here. It's on the shame seventy five zero three. What was the reason for one of the things? This public.
While they're working on pulling up G I S. These are actually nicely color coded by the survey. So the current three contiguous property owners, they're petitioning. Todd Brows, Mark White, William Shelton Bridges, they own what's marked as tracks one, two and three. Have this vacate or have this roadway behind them. That's an unimproved platted roadway. Which at some point southwest of here. Um, was vacated and that property went to the Deborah M. Maddaker Trust. Who's one of the parties knows for a night because they own a property contiguous to this. I also have representatives here from Raycroft Family Trust that owns directly behind us, which is the large vacant parcel. And then the other party that was noticed but haven't heard back from that owns. Across a portion of Maple Avenue that's improved in the northeast of these three lots. These are considered. Uh, platted roadways that if they were ever built. Would ultimately come under county jurisdiction as long as they actually were accepted and it's platted to the county standards where felt. So this is all purely statutory.
I wonder who vacated the the previous. Section.
Okay. So there has been, I mean, I know this doesn't happen frequently and usually in a lot of Lakefront communities, especially ones that I've also been in front of. Not vacate right aways. But when you have one that's already been partially vacated and you can't even have a road connection through. And we meet all the statutory elements that we're not cutting off access to public facility. We're not cutting off any issues related to a future improvement that the county or that owner are going to be doing. And it doesn't impede traffic flow or any access to any existing property, which this does, there's no road. Um, then we meet the statutory criteria to petition. What happens is they've identified for illegally wants to be vacated. There is not an agreement under statute with neighboring owners. So what happens is effectively this ownership gets split. Between the owners of tracks one, two and three. And the other half, the other side of these then go to the Raycroft Failure Red Trust.
I just wonder who vacated the previous part of the road.
It's probably the commissioners.
Probably the commissioners. Cause this council, my knowledge, has never, never been involved in. Any type of vacation of any property. Ever.
Okay. Well.
Because that statute looks like it's almost written for a city or a town. The way it's written.
Well, it includes, it includes county. This is not an approved.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say council directly though, does it?
It and and it took me a while to circle around to this too. It talks about the county legislative body. You've got to dig elsewhere in that article. I believe to find where the legislative body is the county council and not the county commissioners. I did not know that was the case. I'll be honest. I I did not know that you guys were classified as, but when you think about it and. Adam could probably speak to this too. When you're talking about branches of government, the legislative body should in. Cases like the county, the county, not some of the towns and cities, but the legislative body, the county executive should not be the same body separation of government. So technically speaking, and by statute, you guys are the legislative body and the county executive or commissioners. Through me too. I again, I I I scrambled this morning to kind of check through and I think Adam could attest to the fact that it's kind of a poorly written. Chapter.
Does that mean any of the ordinance that the commissioners passed are no longer?
I don't think so, because you've got, you've got. You you've got statute of limitations on things like that, um, special review of county decisions, so.
All right, well, explain to us what it is.
Sorry, we're playing, we're playing catch up.
And this is the first time I just saw this five minutes before the meeting. Just, that's the first time I've ever seen that. And they didn't even have a copy of it. She just handed me a copy.
No, he said he sent it out to all you guys.
No, it was provided. So the way this process works is it goes through the. Because the guys also have a different process where it goes through. All this has been provided through the assessors office.
But it was never given to us. Until now. And I'm not saying that's your fault.
Respectfully, counsel, I do not. Put stuff directly into your.
Right, right.
Okay, there is a statutory process.
And no, and nobody ever did probably because it's never been done before. So this is the first time. We've ever seen this.
I can only tell you what discussions I've had and what information I've sent over to county attorney. And it's the legislative body. And. That's why it's here before you. What I would suggest is in a situation like this is because you have that authority, you can still. Make a decision and you can still have this be an agenda item before. The county, uh, commissioners. Just to advise them of what the decision's going to be.
We can also table it. And send to the county commissioners their recommendation on it as well. Cause my per myself personally. I'm not in this situation and I'm not in the position to make a decision on this. Since it's something. We've only known about for fifteen minutes.
Well, I guess maybe too, like if there's some discussion though, at least. The pros and cons of it are like, let's say if we were, if this was normally commissioners. You know, in this kind of a scenario, like what were the basis for us? On behalf of the, you know, of the voters and the taxpayers. To vacate it and just give it away. I mean, that's essentially what we'd be doing is giving that. Property away. I just. I just, I just want to make sure it be a fair decision. Like, for example, when the railroads were here and the railroad pulled out, people had to buy that property. Um, or. Or it it never did get purchased or somebody else bought it and developed it, made something else out of it, made a trail out of it, whatever else. I mean. Well, we play devil's advocate. That's, that's, that's a pretty good sized strip, but I mean. Then like what if, and and it's unfortunate, unfortunately, there's, it looks like there were some other things that were contiguous that were changed. Before we got this decision, like maybe that would want to be a county side, and I'm just throwing that out there, but like down the road. County sidewalk or a trailer or something like that without really looking at the property really well. You know, I don't know.
It'd be interesting to see, like on, you're talking about the rails, the rails behind our farm. It was quite clear that when it was vacated. It would go back property or. So I, and it was just a matter of a quick claim deed for for Ben didn't have to buy. And so that would be my question with them is there.
Even the need to go to the west. Yeah, that, but what about the other?
So.
Back to the west.
Back to the west. So this is southwest. Thanks. This has been vacated on. That's your little. Jawed triangular piece that comes down. There's been vacated. Including a portion of the road to the west, which is Locust Avenue. Even with the rodent. Okay, so now what you have is you have a strip here of unimproved area. That they're asking to be vacated because you can't actually connect. A roadway from the northeast behind their property to southwest. If you did that, then you have a double front and lot. Their backyards would essentially become front fence. And. The most impacted property owner for this request is here. Raycroft Family Radical Trust is here. To speak to whether they support, oppose this, or have questions or concerns. And they've been contacting my office after they received notice of the hearing. And we've been talking with them about this and addressing any of those concerns, but I'm not going to speak for them because they're here.
Right. That's why I asked the question.
I don't have that on here except that. There is a document twenty twenty four eleven ninety nine. So it appears.
That would have been the commissioners that did that then if it's that soon, because we've never done. Anything like that ever.
I mean, where did that land originally come from?
Well, it says proposed vacated road. So if by one time maybe it was meant to be an alley or a future road for access to some other property. I I I don't know. I mean, it's pretty hard to make a decision on something you know absolutely really nothing about.
So is there anything in the covenants and subdivision as well?
We don't have anything with the. This is just legal descriptions. All this is.
Yeah, I know.
There's nothing about. I don't know if this is subdivided. There was anything in the subdivision about that in the original subdivision documents. Yeah. That's why. I mean.
Well, we've vacated different roads in the county in the past.
Yeah, but the commissioners did it, not the.
Yeah, no, I I agree. I was a commissioner at the time. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. If you want, if you want to speak.
Oh, I I was just gonna say this is affecting those three lots. Coming up to our property where the wetlands are, which we weren't going to put any developments on there anyway, because it was wetlands. But. Our concern is it happened before along our property. And we don't know where, what, you know, who vacated it, where it went and. When when we do want to start building on our property, what's the process for? What we want to do? That that's why I'm here. That the three lots that Adam is talking about for his, um. Clients. Come up to wetlands and this won't affect our our plans. For the farm property. Um, but I would like to know. Um, what happened to the other areas that were vacated previously by whoever did it?
It wasn't, it wasn't this body. I'll tell you that.
And it's it's that should become, but come back half of that should come back under our property also or. How that works.
So. The the section of road that is directly. Southwest of that. That's not been, that has not been. Vacated, I assume. Or it has.
There's two sections.
One section has not been vacated.
One section that also abuts Deborah Becker Trust's property. That is split by lot ownership with a Patrick Joseph Queen. Is not been vacated. But the other section has, so there's no way to connect. Unless you go around their property, which means you would have to approach. Raycroft Family Trust to acquire property or you'd have to. Eminent domain something back from these property owners to connect over to Locust Avenue. Cause there's nothing there that is part of it that's platted, followed way for connection purposes.
Did this? Was this, um. Joseph Queen, were they contacted? In in this matter at all? Were they part of the? Or or were they not be?
They are, they are not immediately contiguous to tracks one A, two A, or three A. But Deborah Maddaker Trust is that abuts that other unimproved, non-platted. Or unimproved, platted, but not improved area that has not been vacated. But further vacated southwest.
I mean, just looking, just looking at this map, not knowing what the land is or not knowing anything else. If the acquaintance wanting to get through from their property from the back. This is how they would get through to it because that other part of the road is not vacated against their property.
So they have direct access in their front of their properties off Locust Avenue.
Yeah, but somebody may want to come in the back too.
So they have, so if they wanted to do that, counsel, they would have to come in here. And propose some kind of road or driveway. Through the public way. It either has to be built to the county standard or they have to apply, apply for design.
Well, there's. There's a lot of roads like this out of Basilique. There are, there are just like this. They're, they're, they're unimproved. And the different, different people live on different sides of them like that. All right, do we have any other public comment?
May maybe if maybe we just, if we just understand what all the benefits are, because sometimes people want to have land vacated because they're tired of cutting down certain weeds that grow there. You know what I mean? I mean, in this case, I I are we seeing that they're just only going to make their property bigger? Like, is there any other thing that's? At play here? I don't. Increasing their their footprint. I mean.
Pretty hard to see anything we've been knowing about for twenty, twenty five minutes.
But I mean, by granting that each one of those parcels will, you know. Grow like twenty five percent. Right?
No, wouldn't be twenty five, twenty five. It's it's on behalf of this other there. I mean, it's.
Okay, yeah. All right, let's save us some of that.
Eight or fifteen hundred square feet. Here for me on Riddles is I don't know about.
So it's not even that, it's not even that. It's that massive amount. I guess I just wonder if it's even worth the. That much.
I I I'm like Todd. I wish we'd had a little more time to think this through and and make an educated. Decision.
Be nice to have our attorney fail to have it all. It's.
Since he knows very little about this other than what.
Well.
There is now.
I, well. Here's kind of how it came to be. And I think I shared this with Todd just right before the meeting, um. Is the. At least a couple of the petitioners came to a commissioners meeting six, seven, eight months ago. It was earlier in the year. And they weren't sure the process that had been followed. They talked to the commissioners briefly about at that time. We said. You need to file a petition. There there's a process to do as they were at the commissioners meeting. Commissioners didn't say one or the other. They were for or against it. They just said. Submit a petition with the process and then actually the petitioners. Before getting through they were came into my office. When I realized that they were the ones from the meeting, I said, hey, I've got a conflict here. Go get a, you know, another attorney. So. Uh, Adam obviously was engaged and. Here, here we are, uh, in all fairness, we have had the petition for. Over a month, but again, just. The way it's always been done and first time I've been through a process with you guys in the last four years, we thought it was the commissioners decision. So, I mean, the way the statute reads, obviously, is to make sure that we're at least complying with the baseline standards are. Notice was given ties to the public hearing. Then it says, following the public hearing, it doesn't say. Say not, you've got to make the decision. It just says, following the public hearing, the legislative body, which again is is you guys. Strangely enough, may vacate by ordinance. I can speak a little bit, I think, to that document that was previously vacated that's dated twenty twenty four. What I think happened there. Is that was actually vacated back in the nineties, I believe, but. It was brought to my attention last year that it was never vacated by ordinance. It was just reflected in the minutes. So what we did was we had to draft up an ordinance itemizing the vacation that happened thirty some years ago. Somebody obviously didn't know. What needed to happen thirty some years ago, and that's why that has a twenty twenty four recordation, even though the vacation actually happened via the commissioners in the nineties.
So technically, when they bought it, were they actually, they thought they were buying that additional. Portion as well.
Sorry, when when they bought.
So when these people bought this property.
We talked about the petitioners or we talk?
Yeah, the petitioners. Technically then, did they think they bought that in the first place then? And it's just a matter that we never recorded it. So they.
I would say no.
That that's not an issue here. I can't speak to the other trusts that's southwest of here.
So Justin, um, I I've got a farmer too that has some right aways through it. Is this basically a right away? Is this actually on the landowner's deeds and the, and the county has a right of way?
I would say it's just the county's property. It's not on their deed or anything.
Yeah, it says it's a platted road.
Yeah, so it's.
Well, you have road on its party.
Is there unimproved road on there?
So a planted area is the counties? It's not a, it's not of a matter of a right of way?
No, it's, it's the counties now. It's the counties. It's the county's land. That's why they're petitioning us for us to give it.
Well, I I just wanted to have that clear. I'm just.
To Bruce's point though, um. Speaking with in terms of right away though, like a, um. A utility right away, you know, things like that, like that would be the thing we want to consider because I've seen people try to do this in. The towns and. People want them, people want them to vacate like an alley. Uh, you know, but you're thinking, okay, what about ten years down the road if we want to horizontal bore that area or something like that and. You know. I guess that would be one of the things that we just need to consider. And by looking at this, it doesn't tell me that that property would be useful for something like that. But I think we would want to make absolutely sure that we don't need that. For some reason in the future. It doesn't look like we would, but I think that would be the main consideration.
Yeah, because the. The electric is in the.
Access to it. I mean. Giving, giving an example of something that was a port. I I don't even know if we've actually seen it, but you know, I've been on on this thing about six hundred east. All these years, twenty years. And that was definitely a mistake vacating that. But I don't know if I see the same state here anyways, you know.
The six hundred vacated?
Well, I don't, I don't think we ever found it.
It was, it was unofficially.
Technicality. We closed it. So, yeah, I don't think we've ever gotten to the bottom of that. It just never got me to support it, pursue it harder. Don't want to.
All right, do we have the other comments on public?
Well, this was just a while back when you were talking about, did they? Did the property owners? Think they were fine when when my family bought that property was advertised as eighty acres. And then when the survey was done, it was down to sixty six or seventy acres. So. Property has disappeared and just, um.
Well, these all all three of these, all three of these together only add up to.
And then, um.
We don't have.
We do want to have something on the property, so I don't want it to be gridlocked and not be able to get sewer over there or or, um.
So are you for the, are you for this vacation or against it? I'm really confused.
Nation? I, I mean, I don't think it's going to affect us because it's coming, like I said, up to the wetlands, which we weren't going to be. Be damaged or destroyed in any ways. So I'm not for or against. I'm here for information.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more.
Public hearing part. So if you guys. Close the public hearing tonight. Would they have to get another public hearing if you make a decision tonight or?
No, it doesn't say that. No, no.
No, I just wanted to see if that.
What's the public hearing is? Yeah, then it's up to us to decide.
And so my wife needs to say something. They need to say it.
They said need to say it now.
I think for me. Personally, I I don't have anything against it. I'm just gonna say the main thing is, is there any downside to the other property owners that aren't here? That that we're overlooking. I just want to make sure of that.
So to me, the thing to do right now is close the public hearing. And then if, um, if if it, uh, would be the will on the body, I I'd say we'd be wise to table it. Until we had some other input. That's, that's just my thought.
All right. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move.
Second, I'll second that with some discussion.
Yeah.
This, let's get it definitely on the next. On the next agenda though, and not, not stretch it out either. I mean, because you know, they brought an attorney here. That that costs money. You know, things like that.
Okay, so. All favor of close public hearing?
All right.
Okay, here it's closed. All right, in matter of this. Uh, the statute, the way. Justin explains it to me. We have to have the public, public hearing, which we have done. They do have the petition. Which. Nobody has seen on this body but me a half an hour ago. So.
I will copy and send you guys all the copy of all the information I have.
With all that being said. Justin, correct me if I'm wrong. We do not have to ask on it. By statute, right now, we can table it.
It just says, following the public hearing. So.
The public hearing is over. So with public hearing being over. Um, what? The will of the body for this?
Like to see it tabled myself till the following meeting. I'd like to do some more investigation and. Check out the subdivision plat. I'd like to covenant aid of the subdivision.
Is that motion bill?
I'm just, I thought we were sharing our opinions right.
Well, we make a motion, then we can have discussion or we cannot make a motion, talk about it, doesn't matter. I think it's a good idea. So.
Yeah, I'm for.
You got a motion bill?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table this. And have a second by Bruce.
Discussion on that. We didn't hear anybody against it either.
Right, so, okay.
Besides the attorney.
My, my only thing is. I can't be forward against it because. Thirty five minutes ago, we knew nothing about this. It has never been brought to this body ever. And now all of a sudden. You know, I'm the guy that don't like make, like to make rash decisions.
No, I agree. Well, and and Don's here. Don doesn't. If it, maybe if Don had some more ideas about that other piece. That might have helped us a little bit. So I.
You're, you're, you guys are oblivious to it.
Yeah, so I think commissioners should get a chance to look into it too and.
Yeah.
It's just odd. I mean, the statute's clear with the county council. I myself have petitioned for vacation in other counties in front of the commissioners, so they have it wrong too. But it's pretty clear as day. I, I mean. Yeah, I just don't want to fault the commissioner, official commissioners, attorney. Again, he had it to me over a month, month and a, month and a half ago. So. It it was our fault, but it was, I mean, well. My fault too. I just. I always thought over commissioners.
Well, I I think Dave's right. I think we can, we could take this. Next month to look at it and have it on our next agenda and act on it, uh. In our November meeting. Hopefully that doesn't mess people up too bad.
We're not trying to be obstinate. It's something that we know nothing about ever. I mean, I've sat through commissioners meeting where. People come in and they want to vacate half an alley or half a something. And never in a million years has it ever came before us.
Yeah.
Never.
I mean, I guess half goes back to the wetland property too.
Todd, you want to get all that information back and I'll make copies and send it to everybody.
All right, there you go.
I think that one of theirs part too.
At least we know in the future we'll be getting more. From, you know.
We're sorry.
It's a Sergeant Schultz thing. I know nothing.
All right. Next, next item.
I think we, you have a motion in a second on that.
Going for it. Yeah, all favor. All right. Sorry, Jen.
That's fine. You're fine.
Don only got ten minutes.
Uh, our only is five. I was notified by our monitor providers. That. Our monitoring is timed out in December. F D A recommends five years. Back six. We're at six now. I have done research or research negotiated prices. I started out at over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There's only two manufacturers that make these. Right now I got through commission to approve this. Right now we're at three payments. Once I got them down from three eighty four, I'm down three sixty two and I beat them up a little bit harder. We're at three forty eight oh seventy. This is something we desperately need. Sorry, it's being brought late, but I had demoed each monitor for thirty days. Right now it's three payments of a one sixteen. Twenty four sixty nine.
What's dollars?
Hours.
One sixteen oh twenty four? Is that what you said?
Yeah, one sixteen oh twenty four point six nine. Uh, the minister suggested taking out a cute cap. Uh, I was asked earlier. Why can't we keep? Some of the algorithms and traded in. Because they switched to a new monitor. And they are not. They're, they're timed out. It kind of stinks. These, these are desperately needed. Uh, we don't pay for them until they're all delivered and they won't be delivered till the end of December. There's no entry. Yeah, the first they were charging us. Boot crew interest.
But it's all got to be, I I didn't understand that earlier. It's already paid by the time it's delivered.
No, we don't make the first payment until thirty days after it's delivered.
Okay.
For these?
Uh. Same thing.
But it's, it's with, it's every thirty days.
No, once a year.
Once a year. Okay, I just want to make sure.
After three, after the third payment, we pay a dollar and we own them. And then do it for another.
Yeah.
You can push six years.
What, when's that next draw for the, uh? Zoom cap, I believe.
Uh, in December.
December.
But before, before we go any farther. Don't this have to go off for bid for this kind of money?
They were.
Where's, where's the bids at?
Uh, I can go print them off. I didn't print them off. The commissioners sold the bids.
Okay, because it has to be.
Yeah, there's only two manufacturers. I make that. Same type we have.
Then there's only two bids because that's all there is.
Two bids. There's a third company that does make them. But they have more recall right now than they have anything else.
Jim, did you reach out to that third company? If you reached out to them.
I contacted them. We come out with the. Yeah, Johnson rep. Johnson, Johnson rep. So I mean. Sorry for bringing it to you with so much little notice, but. Like I said, I had each monitor for thirty days.
So, sorry, uh, uh, just a minute for a second. Is Zoom running right now? We're supposed.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I I just thought maybe we want to put that back up there. Is Cassandra on?
But I did reach out from Justin.
Okay, cool. Or or if other people are on, just so we can see who's there.
No one's on.
So, so, so the other staff now are gonna, are gonna be out of service, is that what you're saying?
Be out of service at the end of December.
And that's because. Okay, alright.
And FDA is, and you can't even contact FDA to get any attention.
I I'll tell you, I, I gotta tell, if we're going through this a few times now over these years, with ambulances and these, this particular piece of equipment. They're gonna stick it in gym every five years, like this last time, they said, oh. Get the um, the maximum warranty, the lifetime warranty or whatever, and even the warranty times out, like you buy a warranty on some medical equipment. And actually, it it survives through, the the end of life part of it, the warranty's still there, you had a warranty, you had a warranty contract. But they even have a loophole in that where they don't have to honor that part of it, because we would have thought, they're still working. They're still in good condition, our guys took good care of them, these kinda things uh, uh, live, you know, based on use life too. Use life, these guys put them through is a tenth of what they're putting them through in downtown Chicago, so they thought we had tons of life back on us. You know, still left on us, but they're not gonna help us, because they wanna make money. Stinks.
Alright, well.
But it does make sense to come out of Q cap.
Yeah. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make that.
For.
For this, um, three hundred or eight thousand dollars, seventy-four, three, three forty-eight, seventy-four oh eight.
Made in three payments.
Sixteen zero twenty-four point sixty-nine.
Right.
Here we have a motion by K to approve this to have second. Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Close and motion cleared.
Well, and the good thing is, is you were mentioning today in the commissioners meeting that the transfers are going up, so hopefully this will help make up for that. In the general fund by getting.
Know tomorrow whether they got the NYH.
You got seven minutes. Let's see, you know these sounds? First of all, before, before we even talk about this, there was so much, I've heard from so many people about Big Brother, well. This is not Big Brother, no. I had a conversation with, with a detective about this Friday morning, and. He explained, which I don't need to explain, so you're gonna explain, but. It's a good thing, so.
Good, uh, as we're up for. Uh, oh, on block, uh, we can do back in twenty-three block. Uh, basically, it's an investigative tool, we use it for drug investigations, they actually assisted in two homicide. Investigations that occurred uh, last year, missing persons cases, we had a gentleman that came up missing from Samir. He was located in Kentucky, uh, by a flock search site, and uh, we contacted, uh, I think Kentucky State Police. Within twenty-four hours, they had located him and uh. Contacted family and where he was located safely, uh, it's like. Todd mentioned, this is not a big brother, it's not a traffic camera, like in, and you see these tick bar cameras are basically used for speeders in a construction zone. That's not what this is used for, um, there are certain things the Supreme Court says that officer can apply for, such as. Uh, expired registration, stolen vehicle, suspended drivers, um, wanted something to ex- save that picture. And that's what they use for, but ultimately, the officer still has to locate that vehicle and make stop. Um, privacy is also an issue that comes up, but the data retention is only thirty days. And after that thirty day period, that data is, we did. There is policies in place to. Policies in place in terms of when you can search for a license plate, such you have to have a case converter, your name goes on it and flock has an art trail. So if I wanna uh, run ties license plate, I'd have a reason for that, I can't just run it.
Dave said.
That reason, even though, uh, sometimes there's some misconceptions about things like that, and I think us, this tool will definitely hinder our ability to. Uh, investigate cases, like I said, we had a large drug case that came to attention of the commissioners back in early. Twenty twenty-three is a problem drug house, and Flock was able to assist with that investigation, was tight in the search for it, and often we uh. Got a conviction for dealing methamphetamine, by the fact is, uh, it's just a tool, and it's not. It's not used for purposes, and we just passed, since this is already approved by the commissioners, and the opioid community, that the council would concur with that.
So what? What is the price of it?
Uh, I don't have the contract in front of me, this is for one year renewal. I know since the last time that we came for you, the prices rose and it's charged per camera, I don't recall.
Oh, here it is right here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's on your uh, additional appropriation thing there.
So it's, so it's thirty-three thousand dollars for one year, is that right?
Yeah, I think it's thirty-three hundred per camera, we have ten stationary, we have ten stationary cameras, one mobile camera.
What was it the first year?
I'm gonna say it was over sixty thousand, because the initial was for two years.
But one of like three thousand bucks, like five percent.
I thought uh, five three hundred or five hundred dollars per camera, but I don't recall.
So that's ten percent.
I don't, I don't, I just, I have. Was there questions about whether or not this could be paid for out of opioid money?
Yeah, so that's the whole, hopefully, you have to be able to. Uh, have a purpose for drugs, and what the investigation, what drug investigation that ties them to the opioid settlement.
So we don't have to advertise the opioid either.
No, Bruce, um, Leslie Baker was here, she's the prosecutor, you know, with, she is the prosecutor. And she explained how this could be paid out of opioid, and the whole board had approved it to be paid out of opioid. And the commissioners approved it then at their meeting.
Now, who you, who?
The opioid board.
So there's no issues that.
Paid out of there. According to Leslie.
And we actually have the additional, additional appropriation resolution in front of us.
And the reason I hurried up and put it on there is because they have to have it paid, I think, this month, right?
Which new, right?
Yeah.
What's new?
And it doesn't have to be advertised, so that's why I was able to go ahead and add it.
So if there's no other questions, I mean, we can vote on this whole, the whole thing at once, cuz there's several. Several other things on there we need to discuss, but I don't think there's any, any problem with the council on this, from what I've gathered. Anybody have any questions or?
Yeah, I got, I got one question, is, is there a reason why we can't have more than just a, a few days to, to, to digest this stuff? And then most of the time when it comes out of the jail, no offense, guys, but it, you, it, well, we gotta have her today, we gotta do it today. But how long have you known this thing was gonna come up?
Us, well, I think initially, it was supposed to be obvious, uh, it was two extensions, because that's going forward with the. Then whatever, communication issues, whatever came of that, like if there's a process that had to go through the opioid to any of the commissioners. And I think this was the, yes, we could, yeah, the agenda for you folks.
It kinda makes us look a little silly when we're always shooting from the hip.
I, I can't disagree.
It's no big deal, right? Okay, alright.
Good, yep, thanks.
Anything you, your next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those that you don't know, I'm Nathan Cudell, I'm worn out at the jail, uh, in front of you is a packet. Uh, last meeting, so the jail was here, uh, we presented, um. Information on a request that we have for a transport vehicle, uh, for the jail. The uh, initial output I got from the council members was there, that wasn't necessarily an issue with the. Containment part, uh, because it was under a fifty thousand dollar threshold, the biggest concern that we got was the van itself. Did not have three specific quotes, uh, I believe, it might have been you that recommended a government website. So, so wasn't able to help you guys with that? So we actually registered, we, we have an account with Sourcewell, the issue we have is. In order to get what we need, there has to be what, what they call dealership codes, to get whatever it is that they had. Uh, and what we're seeing a lot, a majority of these type of vans is they don't have a heating source in the rear, so Lock Monday is providing that.
But, but I mean, Sourcewell is, that like, that's their whole thing, is that they are supposed to be easy for the government to build a bike through that.
I, I, I get that, I'm, I'm not here to argue that, I can only say that it wasn't allowing us to get the specs that we needed. It, it asked for some sort of dealership code to get, get that rear. Uh, heating, AC, whatever that's called, the ventilation system for the offenders, we, we weren't able to get that, we also saw that with two other. Uh, suppliers or vendors, whatever you wanna call them, so you have three separate prices, one is the lock money that was presented last time. Uh, that's the very first one, the second one was from Dobson, that one did not come with, uh, the. Ventilation system in the back, the Geo Commander Austin Fletcher asked them to provide that for us, we, we haven't received that as of this moment. But so it's about a four thousand dollar difference, um, the third part, or the second party. Said they could install it, but we don't know the price of that, uh, so the, the, what we're seeing on paper is the best option we're seeing is the Lock Monday, because it has. What we're seeing on there.
And where is the?
Thirty-two hundred and sixty-nine dollars more to go to Lock Monday.
Correct, and that's the one that has the AC heating in the back. Yeah, I'm sorry, I think I gave you mine, and, and mine doesn't have that, it's right here.
So this one was, was fifty-seven.
And this one also did not have the rear ventilation.
So the Lock Monday does have everything.
Correct.
I think we discussed last thing that thought maybe the longevity of this vehicle would be.
Are you looking for the price difference?
No, I'm just looking here, I just wanna see how much that. Yeah, so the box is like forty-six thousand something, right?
I have forty-five nine fifty, is what I have.
Okay, so we're gonna have a problem with that. Alright, um.
I'll make a motion that we accept Lock Monday's uh, bid for their transport vehicle.
Here we have a motion from Bruce to go with the low bid, the Lock Monday, the local guy.
That was out of jail seated.
Yeah.
I, I guess, out of jail seated.
Yeah, we have a motion for jail seated to pay for this, um, fifty-six, two, three, two eighty-four, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by K, any discussion?
Oh, you're only approving the fifty-six.
If I could bring on some, I don't know, I cannot remember the minutes of the last meeting, I don't know if it was on the minutes to approve the cage, the forty-five thousand. Insert, I, I don't recall that, I don't know if you want to put that in the minutes now to.
Michaeling, I, I, I need to clarify that, I, I, by accepting that bid, I was accepting the hundred and two thousand. One hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents, which was the total package.
Bruce has amended his motion, okay, you, second, it's amended motion, okay, we have a, a motion and a second, any discussions, anyone?
We just need to make that thing last, at least ten, maybe twenty years, hopefully, I mean, you know, we're, we're in pursuit vehicles, you know, money here, you know. You know, over the years, so many times, it's been the maintenance of our county vehicles, and I, and I, I mean, there were times back in my early days in the council, we used to talk about putting a motor. Because the maintenance was so bad, just gotta make sure the quality of the maintenance on the van is good. Yeah, and our, but, and I know Joey does a good job, like, where will we be maintaining it?
I would assume would be the same thing for simple stuff would be Joey, if there's any sort of warranty issue, that would obviously go back to the Ford.
And the county garage doesn't do any more.
Not, not with any of our vehicles, we do use the skill center while schools in, in session. For stuff like that, but we do need to verify, I don't know if that's gonna avoid any warranty issues with them, we gotta clarify all that.
I'm more worried about the corrosion, not keeping up with it, you know what I'm saying, it's rusting out because of what it's being used for, you know what I mean? It's gonna be sitting a lot, so it's just gotta be, we gotta, we definitely have a promise that it's.
You can have the people that, the people that, that ride in the back.
Can you, you use the, the, the inmates to do any of that?
For vehicles, yep, all of our county vehicles.
That might even be something you might wanna consider buying a steam cleaner or something.
We definitely wanna make, is it, is it?
It is wagon tier, great.
Alright, so we have a motion and second, all favor? Close, okay, motion there.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Next, Kelly.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Jack.
Tell your uncle, hey, tell your uncle things.
You're welcome, I'll, I'll make sure he knows that knot's from, uh, uh, not still there, somebody here's.
I was told there was a problem seeing these on your email, so I went ahead and printed you guys out a copy. Just a breakdown of, of, um, fees. Is that what you couldn't see? You couldn't see that?
Yeah, I couldn't see it, it's like most of the building.
I wish they would have talked about that in their quote, I'm not blaming Kelly for this, but I wish they would have said, oh, we're gonna charge you for all this brainstorming and meetings and all this crap. And then they went over the fifteen thousand, that was agreed. I'm just letting everybody know, I'm a no for giving these people.
Me either, cuz they, they signed and not succeed. Yeah, it's either already almost five thousand dollars or.
A deal's a deal.
No, they're eight thousand dollars over. And I know it was a three twelve, like twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, maybe. Okay.
I thought it was fifteen, but regardless.
Um, and I did have, I did have some questions about this, I do have money in my, um. Deputy, first deputy position payroll extra, well, that was not used for me being in the office by myself for those couple months. That would cover that eight thousand dollar difference. If, that's what you all wanna do.
I'm with Dave.
Alright, okay.
Contracts, contract.
Yeah.
I'd like to see if we can hold them to work and agree, you know.
If not, I can just send one to the auditor's office.
Is there a stipulation in there, of course?
I'll have to look over it, it's been a month since I've looked at it.
This comes the worst, they're gonna have to eat all this brainstorming and conferences they have.
Yeah.
You should give an asterisk and say, yeah, this is an S.
I gotta spend the money.
I'll, I'll look at it.
Um, I did have a question, I, I did have a conversation with Lao, um, Heather from Lao was here. Training, I had a conversation with her, she has gotten in contact with Andy Lao, um, who works on the financial side of Lao. Uh, we are having a meeting next week, I'm having a meeting with Lao, um, there's a discussion about hiring someone in part-time. Um, to reconcile, which I don't know who you're gonna find to do this for fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. Considering an average CPA, a junior staff CPA makes a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
I think we should, you know, this is, you know, people are gonna get angry for me saying this, I think she go back and takes Kay up on her offer, at least her look through it and. Have her see if she thinks she can do it, I mean, she's been around these books.
Has anybody pulled Kay's audits from the state? From when she was in office.
Has anybody pulled Crow's audits? I'd like to see where they're at, cuz they sure didn't get it done after they said it would be an easy task and be no problem, and, you know, and all this, so.
And they, I mean, they have told you what the problems have been, um, you know.
So what, what was the whole deal about, about, um, the old treasurer's bond?
Yeah.
Yes, definitely can explain that.
Talked to the commissioners briefly about it this morning, talked with Kerry Block, uh, they're very helpful, by the way, I can't say good, enough good stuff about our insurance company, but, um. So Lori was not bonded, Lori had a crime policy, um, that is. Okay, according to the state board of accounts, you either have to be bonded or have a crime policy, the reason she was not bonded had to do with. Personal issues without getting into it, nothing criminal, but just she couldn't get bonded, so she had a crime policy. The crime policy only pays out if a crime is committed, notwithstanding, Carrie said she talked to Bliss McKnight, but she also, even if she had a bond. Uh, Carrie thinks that it still would not have paid out unless she would have committed a crime. Negligence, gross negligence is not a bondable offense, um, so.
Malfeasance or misfeasance, correct?
Basically, yeah, a crime would have had to.
Something criminal.
So, yeah, uh, but no, she had a crime policy, she didn't have a bond, but it, again. So, yeah, uh but no, she had a crime policy, she didn't have a bond, but it, again, Carrie was ninety nine point nine nine percent sure it was. I mean, even a bond wouldn't have paid out, so unfortunately, that's the answer. I know, Bruce, you were asking at the last meeting, so.
Kind of worth saying.
As a side note, too, I mean, just for the future and and even past when I'm on this council, but. Like, the auditor's position, is that also one that would be theoretically then only for criminal activity? Because I'm with Todd. I always think that the bond did cover mistakes, you know what I'm saying? But just, you know, because the auditor could make some pretty bad mistakes, too, you know, in there. Not that I'm saying Michaeling would. I'm just saying that the auditor and the treasurer are two positions that, you know, that comes into play.
Crime insurance policy covers everyone.
No, no, I'm talking about a bond. It's they're saying also the bond wouldn't have covered it probably either.
So the treasurer has her own bond, and then we have another general bond that covers everybody.
Totally understand that, but I'm wondering is, i- in the future, let's say if the, because the auditor could make a pretty expensive mistake, too. So I just wanted to make sure, does this apply to both of those offices?
So that was one of the same thing. And again, Carrie said she was going to have to talk to Bliss McKnight about it. She was on vacation last week, but um. She was pretty sure it only covers criminal offenses, even if. Well, she's gonna circle back around to.
The auditor is the mother of the county, so it encompasses, you know, a lot of, a lot more things. That'll be interesting to find that out, because did you know that? Right. Oh, you knew that it wasn't gonna. So.
A violation of an I C code is not criminal.
Depends on which I see you talking about. If it's a violation of I C code thirty five dash something, it's a criminal violation, but you know, if it's a violation of title thirty six. Problem, usually not.
And and can can a county um like set an ordinance or anything to strengthen that up, like prospectively to protect themselves or or is there, is that the limit? Um.
And, sorry, in what what respect, Dave?
Like, as far as like elected officials, like, you know, in future terms, is there any other way we could protect ourselves, like with any kind of law that we would establish locally?
I would imagine the workaround there is to build it into your insurance policy. I would think that there's probably some type of rider or something. An Arizona missions writer or something. That's just a guess.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Or whatever they call it, water crap, whatever they call the other.
I'm sure it'd be expensive.
Just something to think long term, you know what I mean? I mean, thankfully, thank God, we haven't ever had anybody steal or anything like that here even, but you know, just. Just thinking.
So as of right now, um you wanna look through that contract with Pro?
And we're just talking about for the eight thousand dollar bridge they charged, right?
Yeah.
Because you're not talking about all the additional potential work that they said it would take, because I think we figured what it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars worth of.
The total cost was the twenty thousand dollars that they did. I I did rough. Um because they said not to exceed, um thirty two hundred dollars a month for off months, not to exceed five grand a month for tax months. So if we're gonna, all the way up to date, it would be a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents.
Hmm, honestly, they were saying that it it probably won't even take the full fifteen thousand or whatever. They, you know. Like, they said something to that effect when we started this. And all of a sudden, it turns into this?
Yeah, and when I, I do have problems, like getting information from them. We do have the other two week, every two week meetings we were having, but they were charging.
I was gonna say, according to them, you were having a lot of.
Talking and and whatever information they needed or whatever access they needed to anything, I was giving it to them um or getting it for them. Um, then it went to, you know, hey, I need, we need to stop. You know, just put a pause on it and then it was, hey, I need a um quote, I need to know how much this is gonna cost us not to exceed. Like, and the meeting's on Monday. I got, I got the email Friday morning. Like, I mean, it's, I'm sweating. I'm like, come on, guys. It give, give me the information I need to give to everyone else.
So how close are we to being reckoned?
Or not. They have, they had to go back to April twenty three. And then they did May of twenty three and they did June of twenty three. And I was told when they started May of twenty three, since that is tax month, I mean, lots of things coming in and out. Um, it's a four hundred, four hundred thousand discrepancy, then they got down to twenty thousand dollar discrepancy. I don't know what the state parameters are. Um.
Zero. Well, actually, actually, though, we asked the auditor this before, because I mean, this is something with it been going on, like during the audits, like. At what point, because Kelly's right, there is a point where you scratch the books and you start out. I don't know what that number is yet. I thought they were down to like three thousand, Kelly.
I don't know. I honestly don't know.
No, as far as the. Well, it's still, it's a big drop, but I mean, Justin, is there, like.
Yeah.
Do you think that would be legitimate for us to reach out to state board of accounts and say, hey, we've had this, we want to reconcile our books? Um, you know, we wanna, like, do you think that would be worthy for somebody to reach out to them and ask them, like, you know, we've gone this far, we spent this much money, we did our due diligence?
I'm happy to do that. Yeah, I'm happy to have that conversation with them. It's, I mean.
What does the rest of the council think? I think that would be.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me.
I mean, because right now, what's happening is we just get audited and we're gonna get nailed, you know, every time, but they're not gonna shut us down, you know what I mean? It's not like it's, we're getting hammered for it, so it's just time to correct the books and move on.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, all we're doing is wasting taxpayer, I I shouldn't say wasting, we're spending taxpayer money. And like a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, shoot, we're only at twenty thousand off right now. Like, why would that?
Yeah, that makes a lot.
Why would the taxpayers want us to do that with their money?
That, when I saw that number, I almost fell out of my chair.
All right, so with that being said, I don't think we need to act on anything.
I think the commissioner already.
There, he said, which I did that a long time.
Yeah.
Last month.
Five times more than the one that your discrepancies is.
Being the devil's advocate, they're only to May of two thousand twenty three.
Right, then hopefully they would have had another twenty thousand. Right now, we're only twenty thousand off.
Right.
Yeah, but we're talking about spending a hundred thousand to make up for twenty. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, no, that doesn't make sense, no.
But.
But if the end result, we can find out with four hundred thousand off, then another thousand.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
Are they gonna charge us?
That's what I'm talking to Andy about. I I'm just having a meeting with Andy. I'm not. He doesn't, we're having a meeting to discuss where we are right now.
You, but the and Lau, Lau did talk to you in the beginning, too. Like, Lau was one of them. We chose for Crow's.
It was Crow, Baker Tilly, and another company out of um Chicago.
Yeah, but we took Crow because they were the low bids and they did.
Lower bid.
They did tell you pretty confidently that this was gonna be no problem. I remember this.
I don't know how they could tell you anything without looking to see what was even going on. I mean, and not defending them, but be like anybody else.
They were thinking we're a small county.
Right.
It's small, you know, just like when they were talking about the survey anything today, they said, oh, well, you only have, you know, uh. X of twenty thousand properties, this is a piece of cake, like, you know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's probably some standards that go along with your size.
All right, so I don't think we need to act on anything. Except for Justin.
You have your blessing to reach out to state board of accounts.
Yeah, I think that's for us.
Absolutely.
My vote is yes.
Yeah, and you're gonna look at the contract, right? And then the state board of accounts thing, and then I will meet with Andy and watch.
Mostly see you on that email.
All right.
All right, thank you, guys.
Stanley. We almost caught up for only thirteen minutes behind.
I'm sorry, Stanley, I was out of the country, but I was.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Stanley, I was on the case.
I was out of the country as in West Virginia.
Yeah.
That's far enough.
I am bringing, so I've only got three copies.
They're all a cute.
That's right, for sure.
I'm basically presenting today about what I'm planning to bring to you next month.
Oh, it'll be you.
Yeah.
Your eyes are pretty thorough, by the way.
Yes, and he's always quick to help us when we need help.
We are, uh, what I just handed out in front of you is a quote for our phone support renewal as for our current phone system. This is the last year that we can renew the support for these phones. Uh, which means we choose one year, three year, or a five year duration. Whatever duration we decide to go with, once that duration's up, we need to then purchase a new phone system. Be it a on prem one like, like we currently have, which an on prem system would have an initial buy in cost of probably at least seventy thousand dollars. Along with annual support, like what we're paying right here, or a cloud phone version, uh which would. Uh averages around twenty five to thirty thousand dollars a year. My recommendation is to do the five year contract here. That'll be. But just about fifty thousand dollars for this one year. We won't have to pay anything for the next four. And then, once those five years are up, then we can think about switching over to a new phone system and the associated costs.
Is there, is there um some discussion about forcing people to go to cloud phone now at some point? Like, like, will we get this money back if if we are forced to do something else?
No. We're not, no, this this isn't forcing anything. That this is, if we pay this fifty thousand, we, our phones stay the way they are for five years.
Somehow they're gonna make them last.
Yes.
Kind of a no brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm bringing this up, asking uh you all what you would like to decide or what I ask for an additional operation next month.
Would I get a good string in tin cans?
So how, where were, where were we bit of?
So you're, you were saying that you had. Yeah, so how 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 are you, what do you propose it to do?
I've, I've only got enough for one year in my budget. That's uh how we've always done things. It's just annual renewal. But they're hitting me with uh the the final renewal, right?
Is this a contract for five years or do we have to pay all fifty in one shot?
So so you're saying you've got that amount of your budget for next year?
I've got enough for one year. If we want to do the five years, I need to ask for an additional.
You got nine thousand, whatever, ten, almost ten thousand dollars, basically, right?
So we've got other funding.
So here forty thousand isn't the end of the. Here's it, here's something, here's something to think about. I mean, if we do do that. We're gonna take that the year after next. You're not gonna get that ten thousand dollars into budget because you're not gonna need it.
Right. Somewhere else.
So it's.
It's a wash, pretty much.
So when is this, when do you need this paid?
The quote on that, it's got a expiration on the top, right?
Eleven twelve.
Yeah, it's it's before the next council meeting, but I'm gonna see if I can get it uh renewed to have a next council meeting within date. Uh unfortunately, when I ask All-Star to get the quotes, they have to ask N E C, the actual phone hardware providers. To send them the uh quotes, which is what it's uh advertised.
Depends on where you're paying it from.
It's a bit of a lengthy process for them to get the quotes from.
No, but if you're paying out cum cap, yes.
I I was gonna be a minute next. We could pay it out of seat, correct?
I would think so. It's it's something that would develop the county.
I don't know how you. He can sign the contract and you know what I mean?
And we can do that, too. I just, you know, and still have the, still have the hand, you know, still.
Go through the motions, but let him sign for it.
But he can take ninety nine hundred out of next year's budget, correct?
Yes.
And so what we're really asking for is forty thousand. Right?
Yeah.
Forty one.
Well, it's not. Not really. You're really, you're gonna have to ask for the whole, for the whole fifty thousand, for the whole forty nine, four forty two, and then. He'll have to. And then next year, we just can't, we need to unappropriate that extra money for that contract for an extra use and transfer somewhere else. Because he's not gonna need that next year, because we have to pay this this year and the money for this budget is for next year.
Yeah, but next year, we need to earmark that now, though.
Yeah.
Potential transfer.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, some stuff that breaks.
So, uh, what did you say? If we take it out of cum cap, we have to do.
You have to advertise.
Advertise, if we take it out of seat it.
You don't.
We wouldn't have to. And if we advertise it, we won't have time to get it accomplished.
I I'll, I would do my dardest to get them to renew the book uh so that we could do it. Typically, that gets paid at the end of uh October, end of November, early December. Uh, so it's.
It's a small amount to come out of seed.
I, yeah, I I think that I I'll make the motion that we um allow this purchase. Uh maintenance from first hand, and we take the funding out of seat it.
For for the forty nine thousand.
Forty nine thousand, four hundred and forty two dollars.
I have motion by Bruce. Do we have a second?
One second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I just want to make sure that 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 the mouse is correct, because like I said, I do have the ten thousand dollars in my budget.
But that's for next year. Oh, you still have it in for this year?
I I can do a ten thousand dollar for payment this year, which will normally go.
I'll amend my second if this one.
My motion. So you you only need thirty nine thousand, nine hundred and.
No, thirty nine thousand, four hundred and forty two oh eight.
Correct. I will make that in the form of a motion and take that out of seat it.
Hey, do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Dave, all favor?
I.
I. Posed.
And before I go, uh another update on what I wanted to do next uh month. I'm planning on doing some transfers uh between accounts. Uh, this uh budget that I have for VMware was budgeted last year, but before that year was up, I've managed to cut off. Uh. The the cost for us, that we're not no longer spending that, and instead of it sitting idle there, I wanted to transfer it to an account where I do need to spend for.
Okay, yeah, that might call me for for next week.
Well, I'll need the paperwork.
Yeah, alright. I'll be getting that through. I still got to fill out a little bit. I'm just letting you know.
Okay, alright.
I always have the confidence that you're doing the best you can.
Thank you.
Did you need this back then?
I'll I'll get it to you once it's finished.
Aren't there any used shoppers out there? Want to make your cheeks turn red?
Oh, we're looking at doing another C C M G project, twenty six dash seven one. And they opened October fir- first, closes October thirty first. We want to do. Total Road before we make State Road twenty three and eleven fifty east. And the commission approved that this morning. This is not how much the projects will cost. This is the contract for United Consulting, helping prepare the designs and everything that they do. With actual application.
Can I ask you a question about that? I was thinking about your guys' discussion today, and the problem with Total Road, you go from. Seven hundred east to twenty three. It has a lot of low areas and it damages the surface a lot. Does any, that portion that you're talking now, does any of that need to be raised or does the line of sight have to be worked on or anything? Like, that just seemed like that could be more than what you were talking in that.
We're not doing seven hundred east, total of seven hundred east, state road twenty three.
Right, you know.
In that instance, that's when they would go in and mill and then patch them more, so they patch, there there's like a line item for patch.
I'm just saying, are there any areas in this section that are like that, the way? Right, so.
So.
But raise, like raising it too, right?
Um. Yeah, when I say patching, that's what I mean, brushing it up to our, for the final service code.
So the thing is, you're only gonna be able to fly for what, a million dollars, right?
One point, the the, it's still at one point five million.
Oh, they have a chance. That next year will be.
Um, well, they.
It'll be one million with only fifty percent.
Um, I don't know if they're changing that or not. I've learned about the thing and it didn't say anything about changes for twenty twenty seven. Twenty twenty six, it's still one point five million and, no, they have not changed it yet. They did do away with it, but then they came back.
So. This, this will not come out of the community crossing, right?
No, this would. This would be paid from C J roads and.
It's gonna be fifty thousand, and then it says.
Forty.
And then it says thirty grand here.
Forty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, our last uh project with them was forty nine thousand. It was about a mile more than what I'm asking for this year.
I want to ask a question about that, though. I don't want to make you mad, but just, just the way total road moves a lot, I mean, like, somebody mentioned that in the meeting today about how it is an important parterie. I think that's somebody said, it's an important road in Stark County. It's one that's like, there's major grids and minor grids, that's for sure, that's part of our major grid. Is part of the reason why that road moves so much because it has a bad base also, or?
Well, I mean, that's all roads are.
So.
There's just bad base.
Like with total road, at least that section, like, like, how much does that add to repair the bait? Like, do a good base under that, like per mile?
It depends what you do.
Okay.
Like, what should really have, I don't know if you know what, if you know what F D R is. F F D R is full death re reclaiming. They'll take, because I actually did that on total road from thirty five to six twenty five, where we went in there and you. Completely milled. Completely milled the road up totally.
Okay.
But as you're doing that. You'll either add stone. Some is instances, you'll add cement. As you do it. And that is where you build the road up.
Okay, so you don't go down, go and rip wrap and.
Two inches, you go down like fourteen inches.
Okay.
I mean, that. I mean, the state's starting to do it, the FDR finally. And like, Cass County. They do it themselves, they don't hire anybody to do anything, they do it themselves, all over the place. So. I mean, the FDR is a way. Is a way to, to solve the problem you're talking about, Dave.
I'm just wondering, being one of our important nodes, if it might be worthwhile to make it better.
Because six hundred, because five hundred is going in Hamlet, okay? The reason that road is like it is, not because of what you did. It's because what's underneath it. I mean, that's a coronary road. So, the more weight you add on it, it's gotta go someplace, and that's what happens. Thirty-five, south of town here where the big dip was, they kept paving, they kept paving, kept paving it. And it kept sinking and sinking and sinking, then I was on that job. We went there and surcharge that, took out hundreds of thousands a yard of muck. To stabilize. So. I don't know if they have. I don't know if they've done anything with the plans yet.
No, they haven't, so I can. But.
Just wondered, I mean, I mean, I don't.
One point five million, I mean, are you willing to pay for the extra?
Well, that's why I wonder how much extra, because I heard Don asked today, like, you know, what if we wanted to do more? I'm assuming that's why he asked that question, I'm curious too, like, you know, like some of our roads. It, it might be a little bit better to invest a little bit.
Because I, I, I know, I know you, I know nobody cares about what anybody else does, let me just tell you what Cass County does. They'll do just what I said. And they'll add some cement or some stone, and they'll till it all in. And then they will chip seal it three times. No powder, no hot mix, no nothing. And those roads down there. Are really damn good. But you could ask them about the FDR. I mean, that's what it's called.
I will.
I mean, not the worst of all, your toes, Don, but do you think it'd be worthwhile to check about maybe? Proving that road a little bit? Just to see, I mean, how much more it would cost it.
Yeah, ask it first. I mean, you throw away good money against bad, you know.
Right, I just hate to see us put that money in the repaving and it not last like it should.
Yeah, no.
I mean, right now, we made a lot of our roads look quite a bit better, you know, it'd be nice to keep on. Improving our road inventory.
Okay, so what do you need from us?
I just need your approval that amount since it's over the ten thousand.
There was ten thou, oh.
You know, because yeah.
Alright. Well, where, where do you think we're taking it on?
Uh, CD roads and bridges.
So Rachel wants us. To prove forty thousand dollars.
Have you gone after this?
Um, I'm ready to leave right now.
Okay, this is.
Do we have a motion to give her this money? Do we have a motion, Kay, do we have second?
I'll second it.
Have second, any discussion?
Yeah, CD, you said?
Yes, the CD roads and bridges area.
Okay. A hall favor?
Aye.
Okay, you leaving?
And who seconded?
I did. Alright. Rick, where you at? Are you still there, Julie? Well, there you are.
Thank you.
My paperwork.
He's got it, I told him.
Okay.
I just wanna move some uh money from part-time help over to uh building maintenance because of uh. I have some backflow preventer that did not pass. Then we have to get them repaired, according, according to state and city.
Yeah, this is part of this whole. This whole request for transfer budget appropriations I have. He has um. Three thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
He wants to take three thousand dollars from part-time. And put it in. Was it other equipment repair?
Yeah.
Cour- courthouse equipment repair, right? So that's all, that's all these are for, and it's all part of. This ordinance twenty-eight.
I'll make a motion, we approve Rick's request.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, all in favor? We're gonna board on the whole thing anyway, so. That was easy.
Thank you.
Alright. Now, let's, let's do this, this whole appropriations, okay? Alright, the first one is different, additional appropriation ordinance twenty-three. Hmm, excuse me. And this is under CD. I don't know what the exactly are for. We have seventeen thousand, six fifteen. Okay.
Sign it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. So. So we have on here, one of the things that's on here for the CD. Is. Us purchasing, purchasing a jack.
Oh, for the.
For the uh, for the bill center?
Oh, um, Donnie. Oh, did you discuss that, that engine stand for? For the uh.
Yeah.
Skill this morning.
And we actually proved.
Can, can I explain that?
Yeah.
Okay, so um. I, I forgot, the corporation or the, the cooperative that the skill belongs to will pay. Um, I think it was forty-nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And so, what I had hoped, because they, they're just starting their diesel mechanics, they've got. They've got motors out there that need to be put on stands, that we could um, uh, pay the additional. Out of uh, edit money or CD money. And uh, that way we could go ahead and get that jack uh. Stand ordered so they can start working on those motors. I, do you remember how much was the county, what we were gonna ask the county?
Forty-two one five.
I thought it was forty-five oh one.
Yeah.
Is that what we're asking, forty-five oh one, but guys, um. Yeah, that's about sixty-seven.
It does, it does.
They got sixty-seven automotive students out there when they were only hoping for like fifty-six, so. Uh, the program's going strong, and I, I would, I would suggest that uh. That we go ahead and. Help buy that jack stand, or uh, engine stand.
Okay, so is that a motion?
I will make that a motion, it was forty-five hundred and one dollars if I remember.
That is what it is. Okay. Do we have second?
I'll second.
Hey, discussion? I'm not against it, but, but I will tell you what I think about it. Who, who, who's gonna own this piece of equipment? The skill center, right?
Skill center, yeah.
We went through that whole thing a while back with an air conditioner. And we didn't approve it because it wasn't our building, and we had. Nothing to do with it. But, in this case. I'm gonna have to agree. Because it is for the good of the, the people in it and the good of the county, so this is a wise choice in my opinion, that's all I gotta say. Any other discussion?
You raised a good point, I mean. Yes, if we, if we had to take it back, we don't have a word to store it really, but we do have diesel mechanics out at our, like, let's say, for example. The, the highway garage. And they, and they, like, like, let's say two weeks into it, they decide, oh, we're gonna move the program or something, they didn't need it anymore. There was stipulation that since we bought it. That.
Well, you're only paying.
I'm paying for part of it.
That we could buy it back for the bout, we get first shot for buying a back for. I don't care.
They're, the corporation's paying.
Forty-nine ninety-nine.
No, they're paying six thousand. One hundred dollars almost. They're paying that much of it.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully that's, that's program sounds. We could buy it back, but anyways, I'm not, I'm, yes, I just.
I'm looking right at it.
You know, I feel a way to protect our interest in it.
That part was not brought up at the meeting.
Never spoke about it, really. I heard somebody ask something about. Who owns it or something, right?
But at the skill meeting, we never, I never, never even thought about that.
I mean. I, I will say, like, you know, years ago, remember they decided not to use the paint booth? I, that was fifty-six thousand dollar paint booth that. Bought pretty cheap, brand new.
I didn't know.
Luckily, one of our local businesses was able to put it to use, and now they've sold it to one of the other local businesses, so it. Went to good hands, but you know, the thing was though, is that, you know, sometimes that stuff gets sold for a fraction. If ch- programs change or whatever else, and.
If they had been, that kid's hopeful, they'll wear it out before they have to get rid of it.
Hopefully, yeah.
So. All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Be a pretty substantial.
Alright.
It, it's not just a stand, it actually lifts the engine.
What is that, seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty on there? Supplies, says supplies.
Thank you.
I think that was for the highway department, wasn't it, Donnie? Seventeen thousand, something on CD, it was for the highway department? No, no. You approved it at a different meeting.
It's.
It was in the.
It's one 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 two.
Yeah, that's CD. Have to look at, see if I can find them.
I can't remember.
If I find it in the previous minute.
Wasn't for the stairs, was it?
For what?
The stairs? The, the cement?
Oh, oh, right here, wait a minute. Bruce made the motion and Dave approved it. That, that was for, that was for. I assume. That was for Nard Judson for the.
Oh, yes, that's, that was for the masonry.
Okay, see?
That's right.
One time beyond.
Okay, so. Well, we have on CD, we have a total of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Um. Seventeen six one five is for the North, North Judson Stark County program. And the other forty-five oh one is for a jack for skill. Uh. So do we have a motion to approve that amount?
I saw move.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And the next.
I need to hear who seconded that. Oh, thank you, Dave.
And the next one.
By the way, they've got seven students in that program so far, just this first semester, so.
And the next one is the opioid restricted. Um. The thirty-three is on there for the flat cameras. And then there's another fifty thousand for personal services.
That's for that uh.
Counselor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
What is that one? For the counselor.
Yeah, and then there's another twenty thousand for the MIH. Which is what?
The MIH is the, it's with Jim, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the last one is jail treatment, which I know that came up. And that one's for seven hundred and six thousand dollars. So. Out of the opioid restricted. It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. This is a restricted fund. It's a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars even. So do we have a motion?
I need that motion.
Okay, you made the motion second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next one. Is the opioid unrestricted fund.
That's, I think, part of the.
It is part of it, we split it up.
Yeah.
No, we did, we did that included those cameras that we did in a hundred and seventy-nine, right?
Yeah, the cameras were in the seventy-nine, this. This other forty thousand is part of the MIH.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because we split it up. So. There's forty thousand dollars of the opioid unrestricted fund. So that goes along with the twenty thousand that is in the um, MIH. And the other fund, the restricted. So do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Bill, second? Bruce, you second it?
I will, if. Second, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last one on here is. There's a four thousand dollar. Personal expenses for the solar. What is that?
That's for the um, attorney for the planning commission to prepare a soul.
Alright, we approve that. Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Have second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, so this one is all done. Alright, the next one. This is a transfer. This is ordinance twenty-eight. Um, this is, the first one is for Purdue. They wanted to take. Sixty-eight fifteen computer contract, fourteen dollars out posted to a grant toll of eighty-two fifteen. To office supplies. That's one. And the other one for Purdue. Is. Excuse me. They want to take two hundred and nine dollars and fifty-two cents out of computer contract, put that into repair maintenance. Two hundred and nine fifty-two. And. The last one. Is the one Rick just talked about. Taking the three thousand on part-time L and putting it courthouse equipment repair. So. With that being said. Yeah, so we have. Sixty-eight fifteen, fourteen dollars, two hundred and nine fifty-two, those are all from Purdue. And then, the three thousand dollars. With courthouse repair, so. This is ordinance twenty-eight, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
These transfers, yeah, motion by Kay?
I'll second.
Second by Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Okay. There we go. Right down the line. Um. Have the council meetings from nine fifteen twenty-five. We have a motion to approve them.
Show move.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Bruce, seconded by Bill, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Alright. Okay, what do we need to know about the uh?
You guys had talked about adding spouses.
We talked about not adding spouses, but go ahead. We talked about not adding spouses, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, somebody asked about adding spouse and commissioners do not want to add spouses. Because there won't be room.
Yeah.
At the V F W, which is their habit. So there's not room, so spouses will not be invited.
Cause, cause I mean, one of the other things was that spouse, they could bring their spouse and they could pay.
Oh, yeah, there's not.
Uh, but, but I think, I think for next year, maybe we should look for a bigger venue if there's a lot of people that wanna bring their spouse. Ju- just saying, like, if that's a big deal, I mean.
Bringing your spouse and it becomes a holiday party, you're not allowed to have a holiday party.
Alright, most people wouldn't wanna bring their spouse, I'm just thinking if a lot of people did, but you have a spouse, so I.
No, I don't either.
You know, it's a break there, and it doesn't count.
I can't really, I can't, you know, come to the count, counselor means.
Okay, well, then I'm awful at not doing it, I just. I didn't want people to, you know, feel bad about it.
Alright, do we? Do we have any other business to counsel?
I would like to bring something up, I, um. I am dissatisfied with the economic development, um. Situation, and I would like to step down. From my board position, we've got Dave on there and we got Kay on there. Uh, I think the council could do without me on there, so. I, uh, will submit it in writing if necessary, if not, I just wanna. Put that before the board this evening.
Not gonna leave you skilled too, are you?
Uh, no, and, and that does not include skill, I'm very, very active in skill and I'm gonna remain on the skill board.
Do we have to do official action on that?
You just vote to accept his resignation.
Is that, is that through the end of the year, or is that?
Is that right now? And let me, let me explain why, since I'm, I'm on that board, um, we're in a situation. Where, uh, skill and, and the foundation, uh, I guess in the past, they've wanted it to be split. Um, we've got the foundation that doesn't want to do, uh, do a lot of things for skill. And, um, I think what they're gonna do, I think they're gonna come up with an exuberant, uh. Uh, rent for that skill building out there, and I, that is not worth. And I know there are people on this board that are not happy with me bringing up the past. But there would be no economic development in Stark County if it wasn't for skill, that's what's so good. So, uh, I wanna, I wanna sever myself from that situation if you don't mind.
Did we talk about it a little bit?
Yeah.
You know, cause I, I think, you know, just being on the, uh, board myself and. And I'm, Kay may wanna say something about this too, I think part of the problem is just survival. For the Economic Development Foundation, maybe part of the issue with needing that money for the rent. I mean, is there some other way that the county could help sponsor something about the survival of the economy?
Well, and that very well could be, but. I'm, I'm sit there and I look at that skill building out there and who determined that economic development? Funded all that, you know, some of the, some of the, the, the monies that we have, not, they're not split. Were originally skill and development together, so I, I, I questioned that, um, the Economic Development. Foundation and say this is my building, because I think part of that was paid on the back of skill. But my, my fear is, is they're going to make an exuberant. Rent on that, because I, I've already, I've already listened to some of the finance board. Um, we need and have vocational training in this. County for our kids.
Yeah.
And if they don't have the heart, and I'll tell you something else that bothered me, and I won't mention any names, but when I, when a taxpayer. And a, a voting citizen goes in to the economic development and ask a question about a, a data center. And they don't bother to get back with him, and then I'm told what business does he have? Uh, paying taxes and voting. Pretty much makes him a vested interest.
There, there's the. I, I've heard that there's some people making decisions for data centers already, I don't know much about them myself even.
No, I don't.
Saying we shouldn't do it, and I don't know why people are saying that.
We oughta at least find out where it's all about, and I think the development foundation should at least give us the information. So we can.
Foundation's interested in it in general, just from the people I've heard, but I think, you know, there's been sort of a. You know, a move to, you know, try away from in Stark County, I, I hate that some people are speaking on behalf of the others on that.
Well, I, I, I think the funding commission, uh, put. Getting an ordinance together before.
Be honest with you.
Well, the foundation's who attracts economic development, I think is what Bruce was pointing out.
They're, they, the foundation should not be the point person for any development like that in this county.
No, I'm not saying. Information to give to the commissioners and eventually to the council.
To be in the normal, you know, the normal chain of command of things.
But I think what Bruce is saying is usually people, if they wanna locate in Stark County, they'll knock on the door of the economic development, that's what we're always complaining that they're not bringing that for the table, that's what they're there for. And that, and I know that a couple of data centers have approached the economic development foundation, I, you know, Bruce is.
There's a rumor that they've already secured three hundred acres.
Really?
I don't know, it's next to Dave Bierman, I don't care.
Hey, I'll tell you what. Uh, the three hundred acres that's around me is all wood, so I hope.
Where, where, where do you think it would be three hundred acres, Dave? I'm not saying it's.
Well, that might be a bad choice, I haven't heard system. Think about Cisco is there's a lot of water in the ground there already, and data centers apparently need water.
Well, they have a lot of water, that, that's a whole. And yeah, they need power.
Well, we're producing power here, that's one of our.
But there's no lines there, there's just that little, it's seventy-two thousand. Seventy-two thousand line out there on thirty-five, they're good, they need like.
Well, we wouldn't be gonna buy that.
Well, but, but at least we can have information.
Somebody from the planning commission. Mentioned to me though that. And, and I've heard some of this too, but I heard it's like a five billion dollar investment, I mean.
Yeah.
That is life-changing for Stark. We wouldn't at least wanna hear what's, what it's about, I'm, you know, you would think we would at least.
Well, at least entertain it.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Do we have a motion to accept Bruce's resignation?
I'll make the motion to.
All in favor?
No.
That being.
Didn't hear who seconded it, I'm sorry.
Kate, Kate.
With, with that being said. I've been wondering on anything I've developed, maybe since I've been elected to the county and. Everybody has done their power to fight me so I couldn't be.
I'd make a motion that Todd. Uh, E. Todd Linebaugh replaced me. On the Economic Development Foundation.
Okay, we have a motion by Bruce, second by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried. Alright. And. The last thing, I know David won't hear this, so he knows I'm not.
So, I got one thing too then, if you, if you got the one or mine, I got one.
One thing, I want to talk about Baker Tilly.
You're gonna help us figure too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had one quick thing then.
So, the only thing I talked about, they were supposed to come tonight, they couldn't come.
Oh, good.
So. So I don't know, Justin, you tell me. Can we have, can we have an executive meeting with them to discuss what their findings were? On, on the E R and the E D A?
Why can't we have a special meeting open to the public?
If we do, well, here's what's gonna happen. It's not gonna be one of the meetings where we can't do anything in conference, because everybody's talking, because we're not gonna put up with that. We need to hear this out.
Yeah.
And not make a buck, cause I. Cause I believe by the ordinance. I can just put a stop. To public comment.
You don't have to take any.
If that's, no.
None.
If that's what we have to do, I don't care, I just don't want it to turn to a circus.
Why don't you just do that?
That's all.
Just do a special meeting and close it.
That's okay, I don't care, I, I just, I just want it to be brought up, that I don't want it to turn to a circus. Because that's not gonna do anybody any justice.
Well, I know people, uh, you probably heard this too, apparently they had one in Placeta County, I haven't watched it. But apparently it was, it was presented well by Baker Tilly.
Okay.
And a lot of people in Stark County are asking, so why haven't we done?
I, I contacted them, I contacted them, Dave.
Yes.
About being here today. But they can't, they're out of town. The guy that we want to come, and he is gonna be back in town. Um. But I'm here. I believe. The twenty-sixth or seventh. Is I believe it's what he told me, okay, um.
Could we just do it the twenty-sixth or seventh?
Uh, let me see what it says here. To the Christmas. Sunday, that's, that's a Sunday.
Twenty-sixth is a Sunday.
Yeah, he will be back, he'll be back to work. October twenty-seventh. Which is a Monday.
I'm here.
And.
I'd like to hear it.
I, I told him tentatively that I would. Talk to the board tonight about it. I tentatively set it for. For the sixth. I told him the sixth, just because that would give us more time, that's the day of the commissioners meeting, but. I can reach out to him and see if they can do it the twenty-seventh.
I might, I might to do it sooner, I mean. And Mr. Bruce, he's been asking for. Them to tell us what's better, and, and apparently they did that.
And, and, and let's face it, if, if, if we need to. I get these initials all figured out, the economic. What?
E R A, E D A.
What is it?
E R A and the E D A.
Yeah, and, and if, if we need to give them a counter offer. Uh, we need to do that.
Alright, well, I'll contact him and we'll try to get for the twenty-seventh. And. That's a Monday, is there anything else, or when do you wanna have it?
I could. Monday's good for me.
Monday's good.
The twenty-ninth, we're having that exercise, Todd, we.
Well, we, we wanna do it at five o'clock, for this, for just the standpoint of it could be a longer, longer meeting.
I could do it during the day.
Five P M on the twenty-seventh?
I could do it for the day, during the day too, but I don't know. I don't know how that works out for the public, if that's what we're worried about.
Yeah, I don't know, I just, you know, we moved our meeting from four o'clock and. It didn't improve the attendance, which we go through that with our other meetings, it doesn't really change it, so I don't know, I mean, I just. The greater good, I don't know if there's more people, so that are employees that would need, would wanna hear that.
Would I think? So, here's what. Okay, I know for sure. That he can do. That he can do the, the sixth for sure, okay, but I will call him, or I'll email, cause he's downtown. And ask me about this day. And then. If this date will not work. Then we can do it a week later.
Yeah, I mean, we're always Zoom, like, we know whoever's not here, I mean.
Okay.
Five P M, the twenty-seventh, or?
Or November.
Assuming this is something that Cassandra will want to participate in, so we definitely wanna make.
But at five P M?
Yeah.
In case she decides she wants to.
That's the time I want, I don't know what, what the rest of the board.
I'm good anytime.
Actually, it would be, yeah, No- November sixth is the day he said to me, which was a Thursday, weird ass days, but.
Thursday's a weird day anyways, usually.
I will, I will, I will email him back and ask him about the twenty-seventh would be preferable for us at. What time did we say?
Five P M.
Five P M, so that'd be six o'clock their time. Alright. Okay, alright, so, two quick things, if you guys don't mind, the first thing is, and, um, you may have already heard some things, Michaeline, but.
We had approved, um, helping Sam Pier Fire, um, with their firehouse. And I told the trustee to get ahold of you to see how to start paying that out, because they need that, um, uh, you know, to start with their work. But Bill's been helping with a lot of the engineering and stuff.
It typed up something. She, and she doesn't under, I sent her examples of what the other people turned in, and she doesn't understand, I guess, what we want.
Okay, can, can you send me the example?
Yeah, okay, now I won't be here all next week, cause I'm, I mean, all this week, I should say, we're leaving tomorrow morning at ten o'clock for a conference. I won't be back till Friday afternoon, and then I have an executive session with commissioners. So I won't be able to do, I'm gonna try to work there, but usually the whole day is tied up.
But that's already all approved, though, right, I mean, it's already, the commissioners, everything, everybody's approved it, all they have to do is request it, right? So, all she has to do is a request.
Well, she requested, and I typed up the claim for, but I told her she had to have something to add to the claim, and all she sent was the claim.
Okay.
With nothing attached, saying, you know.
I'll talk to you later, I'll talk to you later. Well, we'll see if we can, yeah, help her out, yeah.
Yeah, like, maybe even something from you guys saying to pay it out would be good enough for me. You know. It's just she. Doesn't have anything attached, saying. That, you know, invoices. Plans have to have something attached. You can't just submit a claim.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, like an invoice or something, now if you guys said you. Type something up and say you approve.
No, I mentioned two are an invoice, actually, like, just make a township invoice, and have them out, because it's proven. Yeah, you know, um, and this will be interesting to Todd now too, I just have a quick question about something, because. The other thing that we're kinda struggled, um, for is just any money at the foundation, I mean, part of the problem with. Trying to lease that building is we're in the red, the foundation's in the red. And so they just need to make money somewhere, but I was curious, because one of the things, um. Uh, the skill, um. Uh, administration person. Got an increase. And we haven't given the two people working at the foundation increase, I'm just curious about one thing, though. Um. But they don't have insurance, I'm just asking, but are we able to add people? Outside of. County employment to our health insurance policy, I was just thinking if that was like one thing to.
The biggest reason, the reason they got the shortfall is the municipalities that quit paying the thirty percent that's right in the contract.
Yeah.
Uh, they get thirty, thirty percent of, of the, the, uh, thirty percent of, of the. Edit money that they're getting is supposed to go back to the foundation. North Judson doesn't pay. Hamlet doesn't pay, and Knox is, is deleting a whole bunch. So you take that and, and all of a sudden, you're a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand dollar zipper.
So my other question was, that was one thing, maybe that might, i- if we're allowed to do that, are, are we allowed to do that, Justin?
I hope so, cause it's part of my proposal for my next contract.
Ah, excellent, okay, first, you know, I, I think you can, I mean, the school system is able to do that, like, a lot of.
I don't know if yours is the same.
I've seen it, so I, I think that's one of the things, but I think it'd be worth considering for Justin then too, the other thing is. This is just me, um, but, you know, we've all been around now for the solar part of it. I know we don't wanna look at spending solar money. But the one thing that I think would be a good spend on solar money is for the county to take that shortfall that the, the two, the two, uh, towns and the city have taken away. Pay that on their behalf out of solar money from the county. And, and we're making that up, I mean, it's a earmark for that, but it comes from solar money, and that hundred and twenty thousand goes back into the foundation, and maybe that's how we keep it.
I, I, I would, I would not, um. Reward them. For not keeping up their end of the bargain. It's very simple, the municipalities have decided that they're not gonna honor a contract that they have.
In all honesty, I think, I don't know, I don't know where Knox is at, but I think the two towns. Are feeling better about the foundation now from my discussions.
It doesn't matter if they're feeling, if they got a contract.
Well, I think they may even try to, to, you know, try to come up with the money, but I'm just thinking that would be a way for us to give the counties and the city.
Look what, look what the economic foundation did to Hamlet, if I was Hamlet, I wouldn't give them any money either. Luckily, they got it back because of us.
Yes.
Not because of anything they did.
But, but it's a new administration now, you know.
No, I know, I, I'm just stating a fact, I mean.
I mean, cause I, I just, it's not gonna serve.
Say the grapes.
And, and even if we created our own foundation, got our own person, it's still the same.
It'd be, it'd be a lot more than one of them.
It's the same thing.
You realize that that foundation was all private. Fire to us putting.
Yeah.
The econom, and I, and I know there's people that don't wanna hear about yesteryear. But they were surviving quite well because of, of, of businesses within the county.
Yeah.
And w- w- we have, uh, stifle, stifle, stifled that.
Well, we may be, we may be able to bring it back, the problem is, though, if they don't survive in the interim. That's the thing, I think that might be a, just something to think about, but I think that's perfect. Solar money spending, you know, because. Then the city's getting their share, you know, the two towns are getting their share of solar money. If we do that, because they're getting something out of that, you know, I mean, if we have the right people in place, and I think the two people we have now are doing better.
Yes.
I, I shouldn't say, but I just are doing well, cause I don't.
I think Bill has got a, a pretty good idea on some different things, and, and I will not. He can elaborate, but, um.
Not like those ideas, yeah.
I think that solar money, um, as long as it's helping. The county as a whole. I don't know what dog. These municipals have in, huh. I don't see, I don't see. What they provide.
Well, I can speak more for Hamlet, because like Hamlet's been building sidewalks, putting up lights, like they took the money from, uh, Cisco, finished their streetlights. And I'll tell you, North Judson, I've worked with their board a lot. Good guy, good people. No, no, I'm just saying, I think they would. We earmarked for economic development, cause that's what the solar movement was, I, I'm with you, it would be only for, you know. To shortfall, you know, cover shortfalls in their economic development. That they're, cause they're getting that from the foundation, then again, you know, helping them with projects and things, because I'll tell you what, I know that Mikey's already said she'll help them anyways.